I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, March 27, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is being held in the Hardy Hearing Room at the Town Hall on Metcalf Square, and it is being televised live. Please, may I have the vote called, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lettieri?
Yes.
Ms. Martucci?
Yep.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Berry? Ms. Powell?
Yes, present. Please rise to the pledge allegiance. Ms. Petrie, can you lead us? At pledge allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence in recognition of the school shooting today in Tennessee that has claimed the lives of three students and three teachers? I know that this is a tragedy that we are hearing about far too often. We have no delegates and visitors tonight, and I see nobody here for public comment. With that, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 13, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Hope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any against? And I will abstain. May I have a motion for warrant SBW 23-16 in the amount of $176,841.35?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lettieri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a vote called, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lettieri?
Yes.
Ms. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for budget transfer in the amount of $13,032.58?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lettieri, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. May I have a motion for budget transfer in the amount of $15,094?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Leonard, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a budget, a motion for a budget transfer in the amount of $14,474?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have, please say aye if you're in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for a budget transfer in the amount of $4,904.31?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I also have a request for, a motion, please, for a request for approval to pay the invoices from FY 2022 in the amount of $623.97?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lettieri, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request by the Winthrop Youth Lacrosse Association for the Youth Lacrosse Games. May I have a motion to approve that building's ground request?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lettieri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a vote called?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lettieri?
Yes.
Ms. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
And Ms. Powell?
Yes. I also have, we also have a request to consider from Winark for the Special Olympics, and we owe the request that we make the motion include a waiver of the rental fee.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a vote called?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lettieri?
Yes.
Ms. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
And Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have no subcommittee reports tonight, but we have a superintendent's report.
We do. I provided you all with the updated budget calendar. You've heard me say that before, but we have been updating the calendar based on various committee meetings we have, and I did have the opportunity to go through the charter to look at what the required dates are once again, and after speaking with the town manager and the FinCom, we just updated a few of them. I have here a tentative date for a budget subcommittee just to review the final numbers on a level service budget as well as the needs-based budget with the subcommittee. I have that meeting scheduled for April 3rd. That may be a conflict with another meeting that came through today, so I'll update you on that. On April 6th, the needs-based budget will be posted on our website in a transcript as well. It's usual and customary to post it, and required, that it be posted prior to a public meeting where anyone can come. So we've taken a little different tack. We'd like to notify parents through the email system of the public session, and in doing that, provide them with the link to the budget so that they can look at it before coming to the public session. On April 10th, we will present the budget to the school committee and also hold a public meeting on that date, so that gives parents some notification that it's there, the opportunity to come, families and community members to come to that meeting. The actual vote by the school committee will happen at the next school committee meeting in April, so it gives some time in between parents and families coming up and giving us comments on the budget and you looking at the two budgets that we will put before you. And on the 25th, the committee will vote as to which budget they would like to move forward to the town council. On April 25th, I have been invited to speak to the Finance Commission for the Town Council to do a presentation for them on our budget that we would like to move forward. That's at 6 o'clock at the DeLeo Senior Center, and that's also the date that we need to have the budget that the school committee approves to the town manager, so that the town manager can have time to review that prior to his presenting to the full town council, which I believe is tentatively scheduled for June 13.
Well, the budget, the budget will be presented to the council on May 2nd, and then the budget will be voted on by the council within 45 days of that, which will be adjusted. Meeting dates in June, so we will be voting on June 13.
Okay, perfect.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Lisa, I remember a couple, perhaps a month or so back, we had talked about, you had talked about holding a meeting for community members based on the results of the survey that was sent to staff and families? Am I misremembering that?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be based on, it wasn't intended to be based on the result of the survey, it was more for input. So I guess it would be, the survey is input from parents and families, so we're looking to work with the PTO to come to one of their meetings for additional opportunities for families to come in, and then the additional opportunity is the open meeting to the public.
Was that, were those meetings held with the PTA?
Not yet. Nope, we still have the month of April, so hopefully we're going to be able to get in there in the month of April.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood. I thought you were going to have more of a public meeting that was open for everybody.
So everyone, well, there is a public meeting open for everybody, that's the school committee's public meeting. So I've done public, I've done meetings with the teachers, so all four school buildings. Those were done over the past two weeks. Those were done, the meetings with parents in addition to the survey that's run out. The plan was to do that at PTO meetings. Trying to schedule those has been a little bit of a conundrum, but hope is to still get in there and then to hold the additional parent and community forum here with the school committee.
Okay, I guess I may be misremembering, but I had thought you had said that there would be a meeting so that you could talk about the results of the survey in terms of letting the community know what the results of the survey was and what was prioritizing.
Yeah.
Am I misremembering? Is this, does anybody else recall this?
I recall saying that we were going to share the results of the parents' survey, but I don't recall saying we were going to hold a meeting, but I can go back and look at my notes. I don't recall saying we were going to have a meeting with the parents to discuss the survey results. Maybe I did, but I just don't recall that. Was that at a school committee meeting?
Yes, I was at a school committee, because I remember saying that I was really glad to hear that, because I feel like, it strikes me that the survey went out and then the parents don't necessarily know what kind of follow-up or what sort of things rose to the surface, so...
All right, I can go back, if you just give me the date of that, a rough date of that school committee, let me go back and look at that.
I mean, again, the ship might have sailed for this year, but I do think that it seems to me a little late in the process. Being that we did ask, we put out a survey, it seems to me it would be really useful for families and community members to know what sort of things bubble to the top from them.
Yeah, so that, for sure, and I agree with that. So that, the intent of posting that survey for the public is definitely something that we will be doing. The survey has just been completed. We have, one of our teachers who's very savvy with Google Docs has completed it for me in a PDF version, so that the link can go up on the website as we're going through the process. It hasn't gone up yet, but it worked.
Okay, thanks. And Lisa, to clarify, the results of that survey are being used in, as you are forming the budget?
Of course, so it's being used with, and again, we'll be looking at the teacher survey tomorrow. We've looked at the parent survey as well during my leadership meetings, just to get a general sense of what is important to parents and be able to share that with the principals, because they're the ones that are building the budget along with me.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So it happens during our leadership meetings?
Right.
But I just, it's important for it to be posted publicly so that parents can go on and say, I know what I filled out on the survey, but was I in line with what other people were thinking?
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Swope?
Lisa, wouldn't it be different by school?
It is different, it's very different by school.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
It can, I mean, it can be broken down in a bunch of ways. It can be broken down by school, it can be broken down by question.
Right. So when, I think when Mr. Curly went through his site, the site survey? I think he talked about that in the middle school, what parents, what kids were, what parents were, I think. I think I was right, but I mean, when I listened to him. I mean, he had, I just got a notice, and I, you know, so it was, that's all. But it was, I think, so they were talking about what they want.
I can go check with the principals to see if they, if they did review them with their site councils, they may have, but it'd be good to know.
Okay.
And I think Lane had a question.
Yes.
The budget subcommittee has also talked about having different forums available for parents to discuss what the needs-based budget looks like versus what the level service budget looks like, and also incorporating the results of those, the parent feedback as part of the discussion, too. So we have, we have talked about opening up those conversations to parents and community members as well. So I think the timeline might look a little bit different, Suzanne, than what you were thinking, but we are definitely looking to have the opportunity for dialogue about what the budget looks like and why.
And so on to school happenings. Start with the Gorman School, second term report cards will be issued on Friday. Parents are getting their communication, if they haven't already, that reflects on an understanding of the report cards. So that is going out this week. It's clarification to help parents better understand what those report cards mean, because they are standard-based report cards and it can be confusing. Parent-teacher conferences will be held Wednesday, March 29th, and continue for the first two Wednesdays in April. Each of these Wednesdays, the 29th, are March 29th, April 5th, and April 12th. Those are all early release days, and those are for the purpose of the conferencing. Conferences are able to be scheduled in person, or for some folks who would prefer to do them on Zoom, parents have been notified to make sure that they sign up for those in Ms. Pearson's parent communication. Spring is officially here, and with that, thoughts turn to exercise and fun. I think everybody starts to think about that. Ms. Martucci, who is our phys ed teacher, has created an awesome website, and that website includes not just community resources, but really good resources for parents to be able to engage their students and families at home to incorporate some kind of fun physical activities while they're at home, especially where we're hedging towards the upcoming April vacation where students are home. On the website, shared by Ms. Pearson, was a link to that Google page created by Ms. Martucci, and there's some really neat activities on there for parents to be able to look at. This Week at the GFB, students and staff are highlighting the support and acceptance of the uniqueness within us all and all the individuals with autism through both activities of dress and activities of art. Autism Acceptance Spirit Week suggests certain dress that unites all of us in a celebration of diversity. Mr. Osborne, who's our art teacher, will showcase how the variables in our art can come together to create a beautiful and unified view of the commonalities among us. By increasing our understanding of people with autism, as you know, sort of my wheelhouse, we feel as though we are better to support and embrace our own individualities and expand that in multiple, in multiple ways. At the ATC, parent-teacher conferences are coming up, and our teachers would love to share their child's progress with you. Conferences are scheduled for the afternoons of March 29th, April 5th, and April 12th. Again, these days are half-days with an early dismissal of 11:25. For parents, please be sure to jump on and sign up for your spot with your child's teacher using the Sign Up Genius link that was sent out to parents during the week. We're also pleased to share that six of our ATC students receive student achievement awards, and this may be repetitive, because I had the information early, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and it's honoring high-achieving, high-need students across the Commonwealth. Our students, Olivia Bandar, Jocelyn Tameo, Samaya Mayas, Yasmin, and Adnan Maya Noor, and also Yara Ramram. I had the opportunity to attend the MCAS Portfolio Parent Review, so students who are receiving portfolio assessments at the coming school, the parents were able to come in and go through their child's portfolio and see all the great work that they have done and the portfolio that was put together by the classroom teacher, which will be shared with the Department of Education for their MCAS scores. Still at the ATC, MCAS after-school prep classes are continuing, as we talked about last week, in ELA, and those are being funded through a grant that we received. Report cards are going to be distributed on Friday, March 31st, to all of our students. And some of the happenings with our staff, all of our staff at the ATC received CPR training, and I think I spoke about it last week, last meeting, as well as the Stop the Bleed training. Andrew O'Leary would like to share with the community that the ATC created Ramadan groups for our students that wish to participate in those. They have a space during lunch. Many of our students are fasting, and so our parents are communicated with by Ms. O'Leary to let them know that we do have the space for them to be able to have that time. As you can think about it, if you are fasting, to be in a cafeteria can be somewhat frustrating, so students are allowed to take space, and we have support systems in place for students while doing that, so oversight for the kids. And we will say, St. Wither Middle School, we completed MCAS infrastructure trial at the end of last week. All went well with our internet and student devices, so that's a big deal to make sure that we're ready. We do sort of a practice and put everybody in test nav and make sure everybody's device is up and running. Middle School just began its third and final trimester. Report cards for second trimester were published in iParent and on iStudent this past Friday, so for those parents who haven't checked yet, you'll want to jump on and check those. Middle School staff and parents also participated in suicide prevention training conducted by the Samaritans, and we've also piloted that training with one of our seventh-grade groups. So that was helpful, and it was well-attended. Middle School had, recently had full-court frenzy, which I attended. It was quite competitive, and over 100 students participate, and the majority of the staff, and it was a great night sponsored by our PTO. Grace McCurdy is our Project 351 ambassador. She is currently conducting a clothing drive as part of her service project, and her clothing drive is reflective of crayons to crayons, which most folks know about. Middle School website has more information about that in terms of how you can drop off clothing. And congratulations to our spelling bee winner, Eamon Marhany, and also a big shout-out to our other finalists, Jad Guentor, Zara Rodriguez, Seagan Turner, Mateo Vinagus Correa, and Michael Tracy. So we're pumped about those, those kids, it was a great spelling bee. And the high school, I was able to attend the MT EG Drama Festival, the semifinals at St. John's Prep last Saturday. I arrived on time and they were running an hour late, so I had the opportunity to walk around the campus of St. John's Prep. It was a beautiful day out, so I did get a little bit of sun and was able to have a conversation with some of our parents that were also there on time. So our students performed Frankenstein, and although they didn't move on, they did a fantastic job. It was very moving, it was a little bit scary for me, but it was, it's such an interesting thing to participate in and to be able to go and see how Drama Festival actually works. It's extremely serious and competitive, but very, very interesting, and our kids just did a great job, and great parents, and a lot of support there, so that was great. Scholarships for our seniors around the website, with the public, with the high school website. The deadline for completion is April 13. We tell you, we remind you, we tell you again, we encourage our students to apply for everything that they can. Students in grades nine through 12, Mr. Crawby decided to do a survey, an internal survey with the students regarding the budget. I will have more to come on that. He's created that survey to get some feedback from the students. You always, you always have to walk a fine line in terms of how you do that, because what we want our students to do is have input, but we want to be clear with them that we don't want to concern them that if you pick all these things, you're going, you're definitely going to get them off. So, so he's done some work with the students in an internal email system with the students. He's gathering that feedback, and hopefully will be bringing the initial feedback from the kids to our admin meeting tomorrow. Spring sports are underway. We have teams competing in softball, baseball, track, sailing, lacrosse, and tennis. All schedules are posted on the website under the Athletic tab, and when you go on that Athletic tab, you can actually get directions to the away games, which is pretty important, and it's updated continuously. So there's also an app you can put on your phone that'll alert you that games have changed, so if you're not constantly looking at the website. Ms. Galvin will be attending our next school committee meeting. She'll talk a little bit, I think there may be a curriculum subcommittee meeting prior to the next school committee meeting? No? All right, so maybe that's, that's where I thought the conflict was going to come.
No, ours is in May.
In May, okay. So she's going to come in and give some feedback, some folks expressed, looking for some feedback on this actual pulse program that we're using to, you know, check in on our students' social emotional well-being, and we're in the process of collecting that media data right now, so by the next school committee meeting, we should have, be able to have an updated field. Let's see. Winthrop, so I had an opportunity, thankfully, through Ms. Powell, to be able to speak with Lydia Edwards, Senator Lydia Edwards. At this time of the year, senators and representatives are meeting at the governmental level about budget, and there's something called AIRMOCs, which is something I learned about with Mr. Boncorry a few years ago, where senators can hear from communities that they represent concerns they have or funding concerns they have, or funding issues or projects that they would like to get underway. So we spent a great deal of time talking to Lydia about translation services for our families that do not speak English and our students that do not speak English, and the struggle that that has put upon us. Monetarily, in, is one of the struggles, but access is another struggle. Access to on-the-spot translation, where you can call somebody who can translate for a parent who may have just walked into the building. So we are hopeful that through Ms. Lydia Edwards, that we will be able to receive some funding through the AIRMOC, hopefully beginning in July, and so that money would come to the school and allow us to work with an agency. I've worked with Police Chief Deliante, got some feedback from him about the system that they use, and it's through Verizon, and I think I talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. So we're going to do some more work on that and see, maybe we can get the most for our, you know, for our money. So I'm anticipating, I think, I think our ask was about $50,000, and so the need is probably about $100,000, but $50,000 will get us moving in the right direction. I also spoke with Jeffrey Turco, Representative Jeffrey Turco, because we're in that whole AIRMOC situation. Spoke to him about another thing that bubbles to the top probably daily with me and the, and the Winthrop Police Department and the principals, the principal of the middle school, and it's access to activities for our middle school students after school beyond just inter-bureals and the like. So Brian Curly has come up with some proposals. We don't have an open rec beyond what the police department does with our students and basketball, and that's great, but we're looking for some stuff immediately after school. So Jeffrey Turco and myself had some conversation about what that might look like in terms of an AIRMOC for that type of an extracurricular, social activity timeframe for our students, and looking forward to more conversation with Brian Curly about some of the thoughts that he has about engaging kids after school and how we can open that up to meet a wider variety of students and to help keep our kids busy between the time they get out of school and go to bed will be helpful. So more to come on that once we finalize that. And we are working with the Five DP, so Five District Partnership, to either host or host and attend a job fair to expand the outreach of positions that we will have open, outreach of people who may want to work here in Winthrop. And before COVID, they did one, and it was held in Chelsea, so we're waiting for the information from them on how to set up our tables and who they would like to have, and what kind of, to represent our school, and how much information we'll be able to provide will be based on when they do it, which I believe is going to be in May. I've offered to host it at Winthrop High School in, I think Chelsea, off at first, so it may be at Chelsea, but we'll be able to send a couple of principals, our HR, Nick Beshira, our HR generalist, myself, and go to that particular spot and have information about jobs that we anticipate haven't opened, haven't opened, jobs that are currently open, give them a blurb about, you know, how we do things here in the Winthrop Public Schools, and hope to recruit a wider array of folks. Department of Education, I believe, is also trying to do something similar, and I had a commissioners meeting last Friday afternoon, so we're expecting the information from the DOE to come out, and if they host a large forum, we certainly would like to jump in on that as well, to be able to recruit some more staff members here. Policy, just three more little things. Policy review, if you remember, we talked probably six months ago, you approved the policy review of all the policies we have in the book that's this big, some that are repetitive, some that you can't beat because they're so old, and to go through that with mass association of school committees. So MAS has received all of our policies we've sent to them. They have taken the time to get their team together to start to go through them. Now the process is, once to twice a month, Dorothy Pressa from MAS will come out and sit with both Ms. Galvin and myself and crosswalk the policies that we have in place with those that MAS encourages you to have, and how that may look for each policy. So we went through 65 policies. We started with A and B, and we have taken a look at what MAS believes is the best policy compared to our policy, and then what the final policy may look like. We have, A and B are done, for a total of 65 recommended policies. We will go through all of them, and we said this was going to take approximately a year to do, and what we plan to do is bring them back in chunks to the policy subcommittee. Dorothy said that she would be happy to meet with the school committee as we get closer to mid to the end of the process, so that the school committee has them in chunks and can review them. Doesn't mean you have to vote on them all at once, gives you the opportunity to take them in chunks and review them individually, let the subcommittee review them as well. And most of them are, it's, to me, it's a, it's a process that is going to save us from having to react. We haven't really, we really go to your policy and look at your policy when we have to look at your policy, which usually means that there's an issue. This is allowing us to look at every policy and cover ourselves, because so many things change, and we don't have the opportunity to, to sit down and rewrite policy, or you don't know what you're missing until somebody goes through all of those. So I think this will be a really good cleanup of those policies. And the other thing it will do is it, through this process that you have all agreed to, it will put them in a digital format, and MAS will post those, so now we don't have to say to a parent, well, I'm going to go get that policy out of the policy book, I'm going to scan it to you. These will be digital, and they'll be on the MAS website for anyone to... These will be digital and they'll be on the MAS website for anyone to look at, once the committee votes those policies through. You get to vote them in batches and you don't have to do every single one with five readings. How many are there? How many policies are there? Oh, Lord, I don't know. Probably a couple hundred. And the goal is to get them down so that, so that it's reasonable for parents to be able to find them, and for our staff members to be able to find them as well. So I'm excited about that. Last thing I have to share is that through our partnership with CASA, they are going to be hosting a college mentoring program beginning April 6th, and we'll be able to advertise that for them, so there's where the collaboration then comes in. It's a free program to assist with understanding the college application process and other options for students after high school, and it is open to everyone, so it's never too early to start planning. So this is not just for seniors, as you know. Our seniors are well through that process now, but particularly targeting sophomores and juniors to kind of get them ready. That will be hosted on Thursdays from 2:30 to 4 o'clock at CASA's space, which is at the evening of 45 Pauline. We'll have it on our Facebook for folks to look at and on our, and also, folks, if they want more information, can reach out to CASA, and it's at JSCOLA, J-S-C-O-L-A, at winthropcasaa.org. And they're putting all kinds of information out on social media for our parents, so that our parents are, can see it on Facebook and the like. And I believe that was it. That was a lot.
Thank you. Any questions? Just a compliment. That was wonderful. Thank you. That was so chock-full of information.
Your week goes, and I know everything that's going on in the school, and I fully understand that sometimes it's hard to recapitulate that all, but I think if we combine sort of my public relations aspect, along with the principals who have gotten really good at answering my email that says, "I really need some of the tough things you want shared with the community," I think it's, it's more helpful to kind of condense it all and break it into categories. Reading about what's going on in the schools, I think, is, is super important.
Do we have any homeschool applications?
We do not.
Appointments, reservations, retirements?
We have none, but we do have one posting for a cafeteria kitchen assistant manager, and that is because one of the assistant managers moved into a retirement spot of a, of a kitchen manager and opened up that position, so that has been posted. We have no leaves of absence.
Okay. Under new business, we have school choice. Are we ready to vote on that, so we can make that a motion?
Sure.
Okay. So briefly, this is a routine vote that we do every year. We are asked to consider whether we want to open up our schools to, to admission from neighboring towns. We have voted on this in, in the past. Last year, we voted not to allow it because of our space limitations and basically our resource limitations. So at this point, could I have a motion to...
I'll make a motion not to accept school choice.
Thank you. I was trying to decide that, so that we're voting, we vote in favor, we are not accepting it. Okay. Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Petrie. Discussion. Here, and then can I have a roll call?
Okay. I have to find my work sheet, so you can be with me for a second. Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
And so to be clear for Patty, who usually does this, that was a motion to not enact and participate in school choice.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We also have, we were able to consider, say, the contract with the Winthrop Teachers Association, ESP unit after many months of negotiations. Thank you very much to our committee members who served on that committee. We have an agreement that has been ratified by the union, and if I can have a motion to approve that, then we can, then Lisa can give us the details.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Wohl, second by Ms. Petrie. Lisa, can you give us some vision text on that?
Sure. So you all have a copy of it in your packet, and just the first, I'll just pass through pretty quickly, some of them are language changes. So Article 9, temporary leave of absence, we revised some of the titles to make them updated and appropriate, such as trial, jury duty, and re-titling agreement leave, and the title of personal days. Under Article 11, which is ESP facilities, we added some new sections, and those are in line with what is required by the school district, such things as providing the union with a list of employees that has some specific detail, their home address, their site location, their date of hire, et cetera. Also providing the union with an employee roster. That was agreed upon if I bought, we need to do it anyway, so they wanted that cleanup language. Article 21 is agency fee. We deleted that article because of the Janus decision, it's no longer a requirement if you are not participating in the union to pay an agency fee. Article 29, the duration of the contract, we will adjust that to the new dates, it will be effective 2022 through 2025. Article 8 is a new section, and it's titled Family Illness Days. ESPs may use a maximum of 10 sick, 10 days of sick leave per school year in order to address family illness. Family illness days will be deducted from their annual allotment of sick days, so these are not new days, they're just a change in how they could use them. So for instance, in the past, if you were sick and you called in sick, you may use a sick day. If you have a family member that's sick, you, in the past, you couldn't call in and use a sick day because you yourself were not sick. So this gives some flexibility to families, especially those who have children. A teacher who has a child who's sick and can't come to work can take one of their own sick days and use that sick day to stay home and take care of their child. In this case, with the ESPs of the 14 sick days they receive per year, they can use 10 of those sick days, not 10 new ones, not 10 new sick days, but out of the total allotment of 14 sick days that they receive, they could use 10 of those to take care of anyone in their home for family illness. They do not roll over and accumulate in terms of family illness days, so each year, the maximum that you have is 10 to use no matter what. So they do not roll over and accumulate, but they stay. If you don't use your sick time, then you actually get to keep your sick time, and that does roll over, but you never have more than 10 family illness days in a year. It's also made clear that family illness days may not be used immediately before or after, before or after sick leave or parental leave or family medical leave is taken, so you can't tack them on to the total number of family medical leave days that you have, or you can't tack them on to the beginning or the end of a maternity leave or parental leave. Article 2, Section 5, talks about longevity. This has not been adjusted in many years for the ESPs, so in year one, each step of the longevity will be increased by $100. In year two, it'll be increased by $150. In year three, it'll be increased by 200, each step of the longevity scale. Article 7, Section 4. So this is to define how summer pay will be for ESPs who work in the summer, and there was not a definition of that before, so the definition is now that they receive $25 an hour, which is commensurate with their, the majority of their current contract's actual hourly rate. Retirement and sick leave buyback, there's an increase to the total amount of money one would get per day once they retire, it's increased from, I believe it's $20 to $30. I know it is increased to $30. I believe the original amount was $20. Under Article 16, in general, the section is titled General, we had some language clarity around lead ESP positions, so that it's clarified in the contract, so that it is retirement eligible. Each school district, each school in the district will maintain, as we currently have them, one lead ESP position. The annual stipend for that position is $1,400 for each one of those lead ESP positions. And the last item is the salary schedule. So for the '22, '23 school year, so this is retroactive to this year, ESPs will receive a 2% COLA, and they will receive a $200 market adjustment for each step on the salary scale. In year two, for '23, '24, it is the same, a 2% increase, a 2% COLA and a $200 market adjustment for each step, and in year three, for '24, '25 school year, it's the same, a 2% COLA and a $200 market adjustment on each step. And those are the major components of the final report.
Any discussion or any questions? Here, then, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Who made the motion, just so I can write it down?
Suzanne Lynn.
Suzanne Lynn. I'm sorry. You can tell I don't do this. Okay, sorry. So the roll call, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
One upstairs.
Okay. Anyone finish business, and are there any public relations? I will add that the senior class is running an eggmine yard fundraiser, so you can pay to have eggs based on your yard. Ten for $10, 25 eggs for 20, 40 eggs for 30. To participate in that, Venmo to @WHSclass2023. This is going to be one of the last fundraisers our seniors have, so I would encourage participation. And I would also encourage and remind people that we will be having the public budget meeting, our next meeting on April 10th, so mark your calendars, and if you have an interest in the budget, please attend that. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, nope, we have executive session, and the chair anticipates adjourning from executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Petrie. May I have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
That, we are in executive session. Thank you.